To order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, approval of the agenda?
Second.
Then moved in second in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up, is there anybody signed in to speak?
I, I can do it regularly, I'm usually pretty loud.
That's good.
Okay.
That's good.
Is there anybody signed in, Blake? Nobody online? Okay, we will move on to that. Uh, student rep reports, you're the only one tonight, Olivia.
Um, I don't really have much today. Summer sports are wrapping up. I know softball has their last summer game on Thursday. I think those are on Sunnyside. Um, girls soccer is at a camp at Eastern right now. There is volunteer hours at the library available for high school students and Thrive is still hosting summer movies at the Princess Theater and will sign high school community service hours for volunteers.
Thank you. Any questions for Olivia? I appreciate it. Uh, first up, now moving on to action items, the contract for Brightspan Technologies LLC.
Sean, are you on? So Sean is in Arizona. So she told me she would be on, but she is in Arizona, so maybe something has happened and she probably didn't know it'd be six oh one and So, uh, this is, you can see that this is a contract, we have to make some upgrades to servers. I'm kind of surprised we have a server that's from two Still operating for us, um, but it sounds like it's not going to last for long. So this is to get that updated, that I bet is Sean. Does that say Sean at the bottom? Anyway, if you have any questions, go ahead and ask them and I'll either try to do my best or maybe Sean will chime in. I think it's kind of a necessary, uh, thing we have to do.
So we're, we're going to contract.
Do you know the answer to that, Blake? Is for this replacement of the servers, is all the work we're doing being done for the installation or are we doing any, the removal of the servers or anything like that? Okay. I'm not sure that's not him.
I think the only question I really had was, uh, The cost range.
Oh, there's Sean.
Oh, there's.
Tremendous amount of user error going on right there. I am so sorry.
Well, like I said, I bet you didn't imagine your item would be up at six oh one either.
Yeah, that went really quick. I thought for sure I'd be able to get.
Two questions. One question was, is all of the work being done by the contractors or any work where we can or able to do in-house? And then the second question was about the range of cost and the reason for that.
Uh, so could we do it in-house? I'm going to say no. Um, the reality is, is if we had more time and resources and more people, yeah. But they will get it done really quickly and efficiently. Um, it would take me twice as long to do it and take up time that I need to do other stuff. As far as the range of cost, the range of cost is really because of Housel Middle School. Housel file has been a hot mess all year. Um, it's, it doesn't, uh, I'm going to try to explain it, um, as I'm driving. When our staff Around the district login to their computers, ideally in a perfect world, their drives or the servers that they have access to Should map to their computer. It's profile specific. So if Michael Denny at the middle school logs onto his laptop, he has different access to different files than Brian Bailey does at the high school. Housel file has not operated like it should all year long. A lot of that ranging cost is going to depend on how long it takes to put those permissions back. My, and I anticipate it being the low amount. I don't anticipate it being very difficult. And we're contracting with someone that knows it never really well. They can jump right in and do it. There's not going to be any learning curve for them. So I don't anticipate it being at the higher end.
So are we replacing six servers with 12 servers?
We are, we are replacing six virtual servers On three hosts.
So Sean.
With our own actual physical servers on our site?
Correct. The only cost, actually there's no hardware cost for us. There's no hardware or licensing All the cost for the project is in the act for the work.
So the packet cover letter says create 12 new servers, copy the six out of date servers to new versions. So I'm, I'm Help, help me with that.
That's accurate.
Okay, so.
Okay, so our servers that we're replacing are 2012 servers. The 2012 are so far out of date that we can't bring them to 2022 without doing a jump in the middle. So they have to create a virtual server at like 2019 and then they will migrate all the information from 2012 to 2019 and get it stable And make sure that all the permissions are set correctly. And then they will create another 2022 server And then migrate 2019 to 2022. So it really is a creation of a lot of different servers. But in the end, we'll have six new virtual servers on four of our hosts.
I think I follow that. So we just, all that needs to be done, is that, is that?
Yes.
Sounds like.
I think that's.
Yes.
Some, that sums it up.
I am so sorry. I didn't figure you'd be quite so, so quick to my questions.
No, you were great. You had great. Well, I would Make a motion. Brightspan Technologies.
Second that. So it's been moved and seconded to contract with Brightspan Technologies LLC, Olivia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is a first reading of policy thirty-two forty-six, student intel Telecommunication devices, basically the cell phone policy.
Yes, this is the cell phone policy with some updates, some, a little bit of, you know, Maybe some, that's some of that red language you see there, some things that people Maybe asked about that, um, we had those samples from those other districts. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions. I thought we might Get some parents interested in this, but Not so far.
Question. Uh, no, I, I mean, I read through it, um, pretty quick. I Didn't have any suggestions or anything. I guess I was hoping our full student Represent board would be here, but, um, Olivia, any thoughts?
I think it's good and it's needed as long as it's enforced. So that's basically it.
But Deanna, do you know? Like What type of disciplinary action is associated with violating the policy?
So the, um, procedures will, would still have to be, would be written and there's a sample procedures. That's ultimately the responsibility of the administrators. Um, and that will be something once the policy, like we have to decide exactly what all the rules are. And then we'll write the procedures and we can bring that back for information for the board. I would imagine there'll be like some warnings, some, Um, take, your phone goes to the office, your parents have to pick it up, kind of thing. I know that Back in the day when I was a principal, um, when I had a student that had multiple violations, it just got to the point where I said Your child's not allowed to bring a phone to school. Like they can bring it to school now, so don't violate the policy then. And my, the parent would always say, but they need to be able to call me. And I would say, we have hundreds of phones here and they can use any one of them. So, um, I would think that would be likely something in that, you know, we're not, you're not trying to kick kids out of class, you're not trying to do that. Phones are very valuable to kids though, so they can become a point of contention. So it'll take a education and reminders and some patience, but if If the expectations get established, everyone needs to follow them. And if everybody follows them and it's consistent, that's when It, it starts out, it's tough, but then it gets pretty easy. If people are inconsistent, I know that the kids, some of the kids spoke about that, that, you know, the rules weren't the same everywhere. And that's what makes it hard. It makes it hard on the teacher that's following the rules. So That'll be what's going to be really important is to be consistent regardless. And like I said, I would imagine it would be the, your phone goes in the safe and your parents have to pick it up and yeah, that kind of stuff, but I Will do that once this is in place. They do, yeah. Yeah.
So what would that expectation be for a child who wears a smartwatch? They just, if they silence it during the day, is that fine or they have to move it?
You know, we haven't, we, it, it would be some, there would be something similar. It's basically got to be treated like a cell phone because you can text, like I, I can have my cell phone in my pocket and text from my watch if I want to, but it'll be the same expectation. Um, I don't think we see as many smartwatches in the lower grades, high, you know, old, as the kids get older, yes. Um, but there's all, all kinds of devices, but it would be the same thing. You can wear your watch if you want to, you just don't use it. Silence your notifications. Uh, I, I mean, I, it, for me, it's like, I, I could have my watch on all day and not answer any texts or anything from my watch or answer the phone. So that'll just depend. I mean, I think it would be hard to say, no, you can't unless there's a problem. But we haven't written the rules yet, so we'll see.
I think the policy is good and needed. I suspect we'll get more interest in the procedure.
Probably so, probably so, yeah. So Olivia, do you think, are kids aware of this? Do you think? Have you heard anything or not really?
I've heard nothing. I know they're probably not going to like it, but I think like overall it's good.
I think too that, you know, as we get past the first reading, it's going to be the time to come out and say, hey, parents, just a heads up, this is coming. And we'll be in place for school to start. I know it's already in The draft languages in the handbook. We haven't sent that to print yet, but once we do, so we do want to get through this so that if there's any changes, we can get that done in the handbook. Yeah.
Is the plan to get the information out? Like through a press release, social media, scattered the first reading into place before?
Um, so we would put it out through a couple of different means, probably. Um, the, as far as A policy of this link, it's easiest to like email that an attachment or a link for parents, but we could do an autodiler and just say, hey, heads up. What we found is, you know, we went from autodiler to parent square, parent square still has a use and we, But we've also found that we get so many notices on parent square. Sometimes I think people tune them out a little bit. And for those of you who have kids, you might like, oh, Okay, that's my 40th one today. I'm not going to read that, but, um, so I think We actually have started doing some auto diet, going back to autodiler, just saying, hey, parents, We've sent you a message in parent square or a parent email. Can you please read it? It's, you know, we're having a new cell phone policy and you might want to check that out. Um, before, you know, it's adopted. So, uh, between now and before the next board meeting, we can get that out. So, but we're, yeah, we'll use, and we'll probably put it on our Facebook. Um, not everybody uses Facebook though, so that direct contact with parents is the biggest. You know, the most important.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Well, I move to approve first reading of policy thirty-two forty-six of cell phone policy. Been moved in second in, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the twenty-five twenty-six student handbook.
So The handbook is one of the reasons the board packets two hundred and fifty pages are so long. Uh, we've put a lot of work and review into this. Uh, Salina's put a ton of work into this. Um, so it is still in draft. Hmm, probably eighty percent of it is no change from last year. Of course, the discipline had to be updated. There's, you know, just a few things here and there that have to be changed, some things we adjusted, some things we added. Um, and then of course the, like the cell phone policy, those kinds of things. So There's any questions?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Esri and Sammy and I were talking about, uh, the excused absences section. It's Page six, I believe.
Um, I have, I'm on excuse absences, but I'm down a little ways from that. So let me go back to page six. Okay?
Um, where it says the school principal has authority to determine that section right there. Do you see that part?
Um.
Towards the bottom.
The, the last section.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, under the dra, D of draft.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um, Um, the last part of section A, it says, except that in the participation portion of classes, A student's grade may be affected because of the student's inability to make up the activities conducted during a class period. We were wanting clarification if that meant that excused absences will affect participation points.
I actually think that shouldn't be in there. Because, um, and if, if a student has an excused absence by law, they have the right to make up the work. And if they cannot make up the work, they need to be excused from the work. So that needs to be corrected. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. If a student, we get that it, I think in the respect that it could affect their grade, like if you get Participation points every day, sometimes you get them that are kind of like gimme points, like you're here, you get, You know, as long as you're dressed up for P, whatever, you get five points or whatever it is. And so if you don't, if you aren't there, that, that does have, it affects the overall points available or whatever, but You cannot, when a student has an excuse, an absence, not allow the student to have an opportunity to make up. That's They have to be able to make it up if it's excused. And honestly, we expect students to make it up if it's unexcused. So Um, I'll make a note on that. Thank you.
So we'll probably need to bring policy thirty-one twenty-two back Sooner rather than later.
Uh, we will have it at the next meeting. We will, um, have to correct this though. Um, because I think that's contradictory to the law.
Do you think it's just a typo?
I think That sometimes, um, I don't know if it's a typo. I do think that there's been some past practice of We, I mean, of course we want kids to attend class, but, um, of course people get sick. We tell you not to come to school if you're sick. Uh, and you know, or you have a student activity that you're gone for or something like that. We want you to have appointments after school and all that, but that's not always possible. Um, not, a dentist can't see all twenty-four hundred of our kids after three o'clock. Okay. So I think there are some places where that's being, maybe is the case, and I think you probably have maybe experienced that. And, uh, yeah, it, it probably is. I think, and, and it may be in the sample policy, but I think it, I think the word affected, but The reality is they have to be able to give an opportunity to make it up. And if they can't make it up, it can't be held against them. And, and it also can't be, you've got to come and make this up and you can only come tomorrow between At high sunrise between two and two fifteen. And if you don't show up at that time, it doesn't count. Now, there can be a reasonable timeline. You have three days to make this up or you have until Friday or whatever it is, but I do think that needs some, some examination.
Um, if we were to bring that policy back for discussion and update, It's going to, this is going to have to go to print before that.
It will.
Can we make an amendment to the handbook?
We, we can make an amendment to the handbook and then what we do is we printed it and you can see what, see what Selena put at the bottom. The little red changes to the handbook may be made periodically throughout the school year. We did that on purpose because you're always the one that's posted on the website would be the most update. I'm going to go to the law to check this to make sure that we are aligned to the law. It may be correct. I don't think it is. And then we'll come back with it. So it would not be, I mean, we have to go to print before that. So we'll, we'll make sure it says what it's supposed to say to meet the law. And we will go to print and then if we have to update anything, that's what the red's for. And we can send out a notice to parents saying, There's an updated version. Please check page six in the handbook A, that, that language has changed.
But the handbook language can't change before it goes to print in this policy.
We're going to, we're probably going to try to do that. If we know that the, if we know this is right, we'll send it to print. If this is wrong, we'll fix it. And then we'll, we'll probably have to fix it with your permission, bring it to the board and say, this is what's correct. You guys will approve it. And if you don't, then we'll just have to adjust and update it based on the red. We'll try to print it with what's correct and meets the law. Is that acceptable?
The only issue I have is it's a policy that needs to be
Yeah.
By the board. So if you approve it through Executive action, I mean, since it's
Well, let's pull that.
A tentative precedent.
I would pull that policy out of the handbook And not have it in there and do.
Add an addendum. I would, I would love, um, for everyone to read the full handbook, but I Far as I know, so.
But the person that
Somebody.
They're going to bring the handbook and it says right here, you're going to go, but there was fixed it later. I mean, I, I would, I would Make it be Or do it without it, then say it didn't.
As, as we're moving on, I'm going to check, I'm going to check that to see if the policy matches our language or if that was something changed. It's not exactly the policy. I'm going to.
It's in our policy.
Exactly like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's item B in the policy, but.
Okay. We'll get that done as quickly as we can. We want to make sure it's right. And fair.
So it, um.
Table this one?
Well, can we table it and still get, make this the timeframe to get to print? Cause our next meeting is.
If you want to make the motion to print it without that Part, I, I wish, I, I thought Kim was going to be on here, but I'm not sure if she is or isn't. Um, we certainly can and then send an addendum out.
I think I, I would.
I also don't have Selena here. She went home sick today. She's the one that's going to do all the work.
Well, I would approve the twenty-five twenty-six student handbook pulling policy thirty-one twenty-two from the handbook.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the student handbook, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to vouchers.
So I can tell you real quick before we move on, um, when the law changed with the Becca bill, Students must be, students can have excuse absence, students must be allowed to complete missed assignments or coursework under reasonable conditions established by the teacher. Oh, it's been a while. Yeah.
That's why.
But I'm wondering if the WASA policies up to date on that.
Well, this was
We'll get it fixed.
Uh, amended in two thousand eight and twelve and seventeen.
Yeah. But Becca bill's been around since I, I was a principal, like, and that's been 12 years ago now. So.
It's one of those ones we get to update.
We'll get it fixed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, where was that? Oh, vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
Um, move to approve the vouchers. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up is Second Amendment to employment contract between Prosser School District and Kim Casey. Any questions regarding that? Well, I move to approve the second amendment to the employee contract between Prosser School District and Kim Casey. Been moved in second to approve the second amendment Uh, to Kim Casey's contract, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up is the science material kit service agreement.
So I had gotten one question about this from Alisa, uh, emailed Kim and sent it to me. So Using the kits is our adopted curriculum for science. And those materials are refurbished by the Kennewick School District. We have, they've been doing that for several years. And, um, this is just the agreement so that we can refurbish the kits for the coming school year.
Thank you.
On the science kits, um, I don't know what our total cost is on that per year. Is it very significant?
Um, I think it's about seven or eight thousand dollars per kit round, which is three. So twenty-two thousand, yeah. I mean, I know, I, I, it would be our preference to Review our elementary science curriculum, but at this time with funding, as I look at my friend Elise here, Um, I don't, don't know how soon that will happen. So, yeah, but this is our adopted curriculum.
Is there any other way to service those kits besides going to Kennewick School District?
We, we don't own them. We actually are renting them from them, getting refilled. So we own one kit ourselves here because they couldn't handle Having four, they don't have the capacity. They, they're actually Theirs and we're paying to basically borrow the kit with all the materials and we send it back. They house them, store them. It's A warehouse. We would have so many things to store. We wouldn't even have a, we'd have to, yeah. So that is it. Could we refurbish them? We'd have to buy the kits first.
Gotcha.
Um, Depends. I mean, some are more expensive than others and I haven't priced those for a long time. They're Between several hundred thousand dollars or more depending on what's in them. And then it costs us about a hundred and fifty dollars a kit to refurbish them. So they're a lot. And at this time, I was hopeful in our future that we would be reviewing our curriculum. We wouldn't want to buy them right now and then own them.
Any other questions?
Let's make sure we get them there on time. They charge sixty dollar late fee per kit.
Um, so they actually come and pick them up. So the only time we enter into a late problem is if somebody didn't bring their kit to turn it in. Um, once in a while there's something missing or something breaks, something got broken. And so we have to pay to replace it, but it'll be like Three dollars or six dollars. So, um, we, we, we stay on them pretty good to make sure everything is where it needs to be to be picked up. And if someone were to happen to make that cost happen, they do hear from us. And I told the principals, if That can come out of their building budget if they don't collect it. We haven't done that to them yet, but Yeah, I think the whole year this year, or even the last several years, we've had one that wasn't returned on time. And then I said, well, it's your choice. Do you want to drive it up today or do you want to take it up next week? And so they returned it. Yeah.
I'm going to move to approve the science mater, material kit service agreement.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the service agreement for the science kits, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is Kudo translation service.
So, um, This was, um, a, a board, uh, President Rayner asked, this is a, a program I think that he's familiar with, that he's, uh, used or And exposed to. We met with, uh, the Kudo, they're an AI translation company. Um, and Um, and we do have some, some options, um, but, and it is a cost. I mean, the reality is it's an expense. Um, in-person translation can be, definitely be challenging. We do have the headsets to do that, but you are paying for a person when we do that. Our family events and things like that. Um, there's a handful, you know, there's several of those, what we need translation services. We used to provide translation services at board meetings. We don't obviously have a translated transcript. So this would provide a translated transcript. The quote that's here is a um for uh a platform that would allow us to do board meetings and any kind of meeting, any kind of event. So uh it would, you know, it could be used district-wide for any translation services that we needed to. At this time, we do have some carryover grant funding that we have to spend that we could use to, to purchase this. But down the road to continue it, we would have to come up with some other funds to pay this, this amount.
I'm trying to think of the application of it. So it's scholarship information night, so you just kinda Zoom meeting it.
So basically, I think the way it works is you put a QR code up on a screen.
Yep.
They could, they could go to the event, scan the QR code and then put their headphones in and it translates.
For their own phone. They can use, they use their own equipment and then they choose their language and then it translates for them. Uh, we live, he did it live for us, um, and it worked. I mean, he had it sound off, so I guess he could, it could have not said what he said, but we're assuming that he, so it translated. I mean, it's very clear and easy to understand. You can tell it's, it's AI, but it was really easy to understand. Um, you know, my only concern, and I know the concern for Delise is just the cost. I mean, it's um, it is something we would have to plan for long term, but it's you know, we have a lot of language needs in our, in our community. So it would make our meetings and what we do, especially the meetings, more accessible to parents. The buildings are pretty, are, you know, get translators and when they have their events and those kinds of things. So um, this could make it. You know, you would just sit here at the meeting and just like we're doing now, you wouldn't probably notice any difference other than we'd have a QR code up.
When you did the test, did you test it with people that were bilingual or Spanish?
Uh, we, it was just a presentation with myself and are you there, Delise? No, Kim and I, Kim and I with a, with a salesman. So no, um, he is actually in Brazil. Um, and uh, no, so we didn't, there, but he was doing, he was speaking Spanish. We were hearing English. So we knew what he was, we knew what he was saying is with English. So no, did we try it with anybody that was uh like, get one of our, our, our employees? We could. I'm sure he could do that. Maybe that would not be a problem.
I think that might be a good idea, just to make sure there's no like dialect, like regional dialect issues. We don't wanna spend all this money and then have it be in Spanish that isn't.
So I think that, well, I think the, the Spanish piece, because we're talking about this. I don't know, hemisphere, he's saying that he's telling us, obviously. So somebody testing it would be great. You, it's the same service that you've experienced. But I haven't talked to anybody who's listening to the Spanish version. Have you?
I have not. Um, I just thought it was an opportunity that people create, listen in versus, you know, read the notes.
And it's something, you know, it's not a, it's not, at this point, we, we felt a little more pressure about spending some of our carryover than that's kinda relaxed a little bit. So it's something we could investigate and come back with in, in another two weeks. It's, it's not urgent.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and the majority of our parents would need Spanish. Um, but we, we have students that come from other you know, Central American countries. It's still Spanish, but it is correct, a different dialect. And we have, um, you know, Mandarin and some other languages sometimes as well here, so. Right, you do the QR code and then you pick, you pick, you pick your language. Nope, you pick it. You, the QR code will let you pick what you want. Yeah.
It's just an annual contract?
Yes.
I'm curious if it's more helpful to a family than just using like Google Translate on their phone. I know a lot of families that just do that. They just have Google Translate on their phone and it listens and it translates.
And, and you know, a lot of those applications are very useful. You, Google Translate for printed materials, it works really well. It is very hard though, like if you're in a public forum to use Google Translate, if you're not getting the input in. So that's the major difference. Just to do the board part of this, I think was like eight thousand to do the board meeting part was like eight thousand. So expanding it to everybody else is just a little bit more. Um, but yeah, if you, so we've, we've tried different devices. There's devices you can buy that translate, but if you don't have a good, clear, if speaking isn't able to get into it. So like, for instance, if you have a student wearing a translation device and the teacher is moving around the room and it's not a microphone, they just has to pick them up. It doesn't work very well. And sometimes they don't translate very well. If you just translate, like you talk right, you can get by with Google Translate. We have a call-in service we use for like parent meetings that we can use for translation. But if you're just sitting out in the meeting with your Google Translate, it might not pick it up and translate it the best, the best way. It'll translate, but you'll definitely probably, it won't be as effective as like this. You're talking into a microphone, it's going directly into the service. And it's coming out, you're listening to it on your phone. So there's other ways around it for sure. And paying for translators for a meeting, I mean, we'd have to look at what that cost is, but two meetings a month, a couple of hours is probably a minimum two-hour expense. Um, we could, we could see what that is, but that is also not going into a recording that someone could listen to online.
And the grant money would fully pay for this this year, but not in future years.
Likely not.
I suspect there'll be better and better technology as we go forward.
There will be.
When this comes up next year.
Oh, I mean, this is already.
Free and available.
Right, this is already better technology than what we could have done a couple of year, you know, a couple of years ago for sure, so.
I mean, I know that when I work, we use Google Meet, right? But right in that meeting, it transcribes the whole thing for you. It'll translate it for you. I mean, that's all free.
Does it do it, um, does it do it, is it just in transcription? Or is it, cause you can, that with PowerPoint and all that, but it's just printing it. It's not speaking to you.
It, it'll do both.
It will do both, okay.
But that's Google. I know we use Microsoft in the district, but I, I would hope that in the next year.
We do, but we have Google. We do, but we have Google. We all have Google accounts. We just don't use them. Because it's, they're free to school, so Sean might not like that I'm saying this. I don't know if she's still in there, but we technically all do have Google accounts, but we aren't a Google district, so we don't really use it, but it doesn't mean we couldn't use it for this purpose. We could test it.
It might be worth exploring that, whatever you just.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta use the work and it's free. Oh, I don't know.
And also maybe what you said, Elise, have somebody within the district test it out.
Like, wait, could we test that in a board meeting? With Google, yeah? Work on it, yeah? Okay. Okay. Uh huh. Okay. Okay, thank you Blake.
I also think there's an AI option through Zoom.
Oh, I, there is.
Translate as well. I don't, I have no idea if that's free.
I think the difference in this application versus, well, and it probably, I guess, I would assume you can choose your language, right? You can choose your language. So yeah, I guess that would be there. For us, the majority of people are Spanish. It would create that recording in Spanish, but I suppose. So I'm not sure how the recording and being able to post the recording would work if you were using the Google Translate part.
I think, I think we discussed that before. I think there, yeah, that was correct then to the cost.
Yeah, but it might, might be a lesser cost.
I guess the only limitations would be soon would be strictly board meeting.
Right.
Not like scholarship night or.
No, but we usually use live translators at that time. I don't know that the application is ideal for scholarship night. I don't know. You know what I mean? It probably could be, but we don't technic- usually Zoom or, so I don't know. We just, I, I don't know how all of that might work, but you know, let's, let's explore some other ideas.
Yeah, I think I'd like to look into other options that are low or no cost.
And it's potentially possible if the Zoom maybe is just an addition on a license. So there's the license that we use for the meetings. Package already. Alright, well, we'll do some investigation. And maybe it'll be.
I moved to table the Kudo Translation Su- Service. It's been, uh, moved and seconded to table the Ku- Kudo Translation Service, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, thanks, Deanna.
Sure.
Uh, next up is Tyler Technologies Contract for Transportation Routing.
Blake's got a little PowerPoint he's gonna pull up and Jaime is here. Jaime, you wanna come jump up here at the front, make, and turn on the microphone? We have, there's a PowerPoint that kind of explains um, the student routing software. There's a lot of pictures that are kind of fluffy pictures, so we'll probably move through some of those relatively quickly. And then Jaime can, I mean, we have uh had a routing software called Bus Boss. I personally have experienced it in trying to adjust um, some, like working with Ami in the past. It, it's like working in like DOS, like it's not friendly in any way. Um, and it, we might have been the only district in the world using it, but we aren't using it anymore. Our, it's expired. We've, we're moving on. But we really do need routing software. We need routing software that we would be able to expand down the road, possibly for tablets and things like that. So um, we can go through the slides. Jaime's gonna chime in. We just make sure you turn your microphone on and pull it close. Keep going. Oh, this just talks about numbers. Yeah, keep going. Keep going, keep going. This one, go back. Okay. Jaime, you wanna talk about what it does for you?
Um, I worked with a couple of neigh- neighboring districts that already have it in place. They say it's, it cats me out, really works good. Um, what they would do is they would come in, build a map from border to border, north to south and west. And they would directly communicate with our Skyward system. So after they built that map of the borders, it would communicate with Skyward system and pin everybody in the district. So we could come in, make adjustments to routes, um, students that move out, it automatically updates.
If a student changes, um, like for the day, yeah, that's updated.
And it also has the ability later on to upgrade, to have each student have a badge. So we would be getting those phone calls in the afternoon. Well, where's my kid at? He didn't get on the bus. So is he at the school or where's he at? Because he didn't get on the bus or that type of stuff. And same thing with field trips. Jackson would be able to communicate directly with them or me. And we would be able to communicate very easily to set up the trips for sports, field trips from the pr- principals. All that stuff would be a lot more convenient. The system we were using was almost Fred Flintstone stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I tried to.
That's generous, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was really bad. And then they were an east coast company, so their office hours were nine to four, east coast time. They weren't flexible on uh working with us to get us, you know, any technical support. Couple of times it came in, had to be here at five-thirty because they're at eight-thirty. It just, it wasn't very user-friendly.
I, I think too, there's some, some big things. So we, I was in the, I was in a, I was at the bus garage cause I had a little me, a meeting and I was waiting. So I was sitting on the bench and there was this, this driver sitting beside me who was a substitute and she was sitting there going through over this paper. And um, I said, are you learning a route? She goes, yeah. Uh, so she's got four pages, turning pages, trying to figure out her route, written down with her list of kids and where. So and some of it had, and there was handwritten notes on it. Then she goes, yeah, I drove it yesterday and there's a stop that's before the first stop, but the kids told me. And I go, at least the kids told us. She goes, well, not till after we passed it. So, so there's that piece that it gives, you can, if, if, as we move forward and we hopefully secure some funding, maybe some safety or security funding. Get tablets, so a substitute would walk in and just take tablet and it'll tell them all the directions, just like if you're gonna go to, you know, on some trip and you don't know where you're going. Um, it also, they'll come around and does, don't they take the routes and take pictures of the houses? And then it attaches to the GPS, to the GPS location for the drop offs.
To get the system rolling, we would drive each route um with our phone. They would email us a program and we would drive the route with this program on our phone. Pin the route as we're going to each stop. They, then they would have exactly where each kid is at. Uh, information, that type of stuff.
They, you guys also have um a lot of reporting you have to do with the, with student ridership and all those things. That's all you know, how funding comes. So we would do all that for them. It would just be a report. It wouldn't be a bus driver with a like, don't they use like a little clicker sometimes?
Correct.
Yeah.
If we upgraded to the tablet and the card system, it would automatically do.
Do all that. So that's, that's more money than we can spend right now to go up to the tablets, but that would be the ultimate goal to move forward. So we're hoping to secure some funding um to be able to expand. So every bus driver would come in, if we can get to that point, they pick up their tablet and they go on their, right? Yeah, tell them where to go, whole thing, whole route. Yep. And then if, if you, if you, someone's drop off a change or something, it's gonna tell them. So they would know. Yes, yes. And you would, maybe would get to the point where kids would have a badge or a wristband or something um uh down the road. I see some complications with that, but uh, uh, we have to have a new routing software. The one we had was terrible. So, and these are funds, transportation funds.
Correct.
That would pay for this.
It was eight or ten thousand.
I wanna say it was eight, eight thousand to nine thousand. I couldn't, I couldn't quote it. Um, but we are paying for uh, tenth, something terrible, to be honest. I had never seen it in action until last year, when we were working on making some adjustments. We were talking about working on maybe changing some boundaries to, you know, adjust that Whitstrand pop- population. Uh, it was awful. I mean, I wasn't using it. I was watching abuse. It was, it was awful. It was terrible. And very inaccurate and very um antiquated, just.
That's a good word.
And it was not responsive at all.
Um, there's a subscription every year, but to get it rolling, I think that's in the contract.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
I think it's ten thousand a year.
Less than half, double what we're paying before, but we're actually gonna get a good product. And again, transportation will pay for it.
Jaime, you said there's local districts using this.
Yes.
Apparently.
Um, I went to Granger and Zilla.
Okay.
They're currently using it.
Are there any, any, any other programs that neighboring districts are using?
I, I didn't check.
Just out of curiosity.
I didn't check that, anybody.
I mean, it sounds cool, but it also sounds like you're going, I mean, what, if you start going badges and iPads, like this thing is getting like Big Brother.
Yeah, that's definitely an upgrade. This is.
I'm saying, I don't know if that's.
No, I, I.
Pictures of everybody's houses and.
Well, that's to get, that's for the GPS location for the drop off, so they're dropping kids off at the right place.
Yeah, it's, it's more like a pin.
It, right, it's pinning the kid's house for the drop off spot or
I know.
A street corner or wherever, if we do group drop offs, yeah.
Just saying, like, you, you have every, every house in the district that's pinned.
It, it is anyway, if you look online.
I'm not going around taking pictures of everybody's house.
No, we would warn people that we are doing that. We would not just do that, but that's, the software takes the picture to pick up the location. It, it feels intrusive, yeah. We don't wanna lose kids. We want them to be dropped off at the right place.
Yeah, it's kinda.
If you're a student, if you're a parent who walked out or the.
There's also that option that they uh, send emails to parents, send text messages to parents. There's always that option also.
They can't opt out of their, they, we would not want their route not to be in the system. I mean, they're like drop off.
If you were, in a parent or, or. If you were, and a parent or family opt out of having their GPS location.
Can you just enter an address?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what, that's when they build the map, that's what it does, they, it communicates with Skyward and gets everybody's address and then plugs it in on the.
Right, because if we had a new student come, and so that's getting all, and so right now, there's probably, I mean, we also have kids that get picked up at grandma's, but don't live at grandma's, like, there's all these things that get, add complications to what they do. But we have kids, we're not gonna go out and take, you know, a new kid just moved in on two twenty-two Elm Street and we gotta go take a picture of the house, we'll just put two twenty-two Elm Street into Skyward. So that's an option.
Where I live, if you were to put my address here a half mile away from where the bus would actually pick up my kid.
Yeah. And that's relative, that's, I mean, for our district, that, there's, I mean, especially to get out into the country or even in some of our group stops. Uh, especially with a um, like a substitute driver. And we have little kids who might just get off the bus at the wrong place, because the bus driver might think it's the right place, I don't know. Correct. Oh, when we get in the winter, yeah, I mean, yeah, for sure, I mean, we have kids getting picked up at six, six fifteen.
Our first driver leaves at five forty-five, so yeah, six fifteen.
Yeah, and then, I mean, it, it's dark at six fifteen by what, October? Yeah.
What's um, how does the budget wise, how is that, is that sustainable? Can we give sixteen thousand out of transportation annually?
Yes, we want to spend our transportation money, uh, the thing with the state is if you don't um, if you don't spend all of the transportation allocation, it'll take it away. Uh, so we didn't spend everything last year, so I think they took away like a hundred eighty, thirty-eighty thousand this year. Um, so we wanna make sure that we're utilizing, utilizing the money.
No carryover.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's, there's no carryover, uh, I mean, you ask me about any cost, I'm gonna say no, so. Um, but I think this is, this is something that is needed with all the issues we have um, with Bus Boss now. And the routes and the changes and the random pickups and drops off, it, it's, it, it is needed. And I don't think that we need to spend the money to make it even bigger with like the wristbands and stuff like that. Um, but I do think it's, it's a necessity.
One of the things they did show me is when it's communicating with the school system, it upgrades, you know, like at three in the morning, say uh, somebody at Housen Middle School adds a new student at three o'clock. And then the next morning at three AM, it'll be upgraded, so the bus driver will get that notification. Uh, Lupo will get that notification and remind the driver, hey, remember on Route Three, you're gonna pick up that new stop on Ninth Street.
And right now, we have to say, we need you to take your kids to school for the first day, because we, the bus is, the garage is closed. Nobody's there, we aren't gonna be able to talk to them tomorrow, so you're, they won't go on the bus till tomorrow night when you go home, so they'll be able to be, they'll be uh, fast, automatic.
I mean, a couple of different layers of questions, but covering our, our end of the district, although, uh, Rockwell has the current address. Breaker, okay, four forty-two, A and O is drop off at one.
Yeah.
But did, tested for the kids.
Well, and building, uh, building routes, I mean, I, I actually don't know, and this is a question I have, what about the parent that calls at one o'clock and changes the drop off?
Yeah, it would be a lot, lot easier to change, cuz it's, it's a couple, a couple mouse clicks, where now, we have to go in, type everything in manually.
Call three calls on the radio, make sure they get the right kid, yeah, so.
It would be a couple mouse clicks.
Moving into the twenty-first century, we're still working on it. Well, how many times, yeah, we don't.
That's definitely an upgrade that they do have.
But a lot of times, it's a picture on Facebook of someone saying, is this your house? Because it's my package and I didn't get it, we want the packages to go to the right house. Blake, I don't know if there's any more exciting slides, you wanna put, advance that forward a little bit? Yeah, I don't think they can even see that part.
See, that's the map they would build of our district.
So your route, the routing software they offer, is, do you see the opportunity there to optimize some of our routes?
Oh, definitely, one hundred percent.
So, I mean, I drive my kids to school every day, because granted, we are at the edge of the district, but it's a, over an hour.
Oh, yeah. Well, this would help to also optimize that. Um, is the app gonna be available for parents this coming year? Or that be when we move to the, if we move to the tablet piece, down the road? Where a parent, when, when you get to this place, a parent could pull up their kid's bus route and see how far they're from their house.
Yes.
You can also send out notices, oh, there was an accident, the bus is behind fifteen minutes. So your child's gonna be dropped off a little bit late, so.
Do you um, just looking down the road, do, do you know how much it, the cost is to upgrade to the, to the tablets?
It was, it's a fair amount of money.
Yeah, it's like ninety-eight thousand.
It, it's a lot. It's a lot.
So, Delise, we probably wouldn't have that much.
No.
Well.
I'm, just, just. Going, going back to losing money, I'm just saying, okay, does it make sense to do something if we're gonna lose this funding?
I think that, um, I think it would, that would, I, I was thinking that, that substitute was sitting beside, going through that paper, trying to memorize this route. I think down the road, that would be ideal, but I do, we'll have to look for some funding to be able to do that. And maybe there's like a safety and security funding would be a great one to apply for, for that.
But if transportation didn't spend all their money last year and it was happening.
Like a hundred eighty, so if we do do that, we'd have to cut a hundred thousand from somewhere else, you know?
Right. So we have to have the transportation money.
Well, it's all in general fund, so the T, TV, the transport, this isn't TBF money. So the TBF fund pays for the buses, the maintenance, um, and then the transportation money, so we get a certain allocation every year. Um, from OSPI that, that comes through on apportionment, it's not our LEA money. Um, but it's a different allocation on apportionment that just goes into ninety-nine hundred, which is a transportation bill. Um, so they use, I mean, it's mainly salaries, uh, cuz we do a lot of trips and extra trips and all of that good stuff. Um, but, but we do need to make sure that we're spending the allocation, so it, it'll still come out of, out of general fund. So we either need to budget that into our budget capacity, if we're going to do that, and then spend down a hundred thousand dollars somewhere else. Uh, cuz it'll, it gets convoluted in that way, but it all goes to general fund, it's not TBF.
And that ninety-eight thousand, that was one big blow to do it right.
To do everything.
Where you can just uh, do it in.
Phases, kind of, yes.
But Delise, I'm, what I'm hearing you say then is if we thought there was the potential to leave a hundred thousand on the table again, transportation. We could budget it this year and not spend it if we don't have it.
We could budget, have the budget capacity, I think where the issue is, is with, we're budgeting over capacity and our revenue is not, it's not offsetting that, we'd be in a negative fund balance. Um, and so I think if we can do it in phases and, and chunk it out, I think it'd be a lot more fiscally responsible to do it that way. So we're not having to drastically pull something else out of the budget to pay for something that's wrong.
Ultimately, this part is allowing them to, to set up the routing for the kids, like, this is a necessary part of their operation.
I move to approve the Tyler Technologies contract. Been moved and seconded to approve the Tyler Technologies contract, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Jaime.
Thanks, Jaime, thanks for coming hour early, glad you made it back.
Oh, that's. Uh, moving on to consent items one through three. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent items one through three, Olivia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That concludes all our action items tonight, moving on to reports, Director of Grants, Kevin Gilman.
The only thing that I have to report is things are changing weekly, uh, with funding, some funding was released. Um, and then I saw this afternoon, OSSI funds were released, but only for tier three plus, so.
I didn't see that, but we'll see.
I haven't confirmed that with the NIA yet, but that's what I saw.
We'll look tomorrow, well, wow, we'll see.
So that means our schools would not getting OSS up the funding this year.
I'm, I'm not surprised.
What is that, can you clarify the, that funding?
Go ahead. This is, this is under title for school improvement.
Oh, okay.
And we did get title, I believe this, so I'm new at this, so I think this comes out of Title A.
It is, it's, they are title, title funds are like the state's Title One funds that they allocate for school improvement. The uh, HMS Whitstrand and Heights all had those funds uh, last year, closed about twenty, twenty-eight to thirty-one thousand, but.
The roster is not on here, we're not, we're not eligible for the tier three OSSI.
Which.
We don't have a.
It's good and bad, it means we're not, are, you know, but it's, it's unfortunate, because there's, it's just another hit to being able to do some of the work, but.
Just, just to let you know, like, what we are losing, because we had these funds last year, Heights worked on their PLCs, so did the middle school. Uh, a lot of training um, with the PLCs and, and the monitoring of those PLCs and how those PLCs were working in the building. Also, we get it, we had an OSSI coach that we worked with, um, that uh, worked using the school improvement plans. Um, helped us to monitor those and see how those were progressing. And then at Whitstrand, we did a lot of math PD with that and um, book study and teacher release time to, to observe each other. Uh, so we won't have any of those ones.
It's a hundred thousand dollars that we're losing.
So much goodness.
But if we were worse, we would have kept it, right?
But we weren't, so we didn't. So that's why I said, it's kind of a double edged there.
Need questions for Kevin, Olivia? Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. At least you're up.
Um, okay, I don't have, we have any good news either, but um, so I have April and May's financials. Um. This is just a, a, a great example of how things change from one, one month to um, one month to another. Uh, we had um, in the month of April, because of property taxes, we uh, were able to add to our fund balance four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. In May, um, we dug into our fund balance one point five million dollars. Um, so it, it fluctuates, it fluctuates every month. Um, but the, the biggest thing to take away here is, and, and Deanna and I have talked a lot about this. Our spending is not stopped, right? If you look at the trends and look at the graphs, I mean, we're spending even just in MSOC, so just not even payroll. Uh, I mean, some months we're spending almost a million dollars. Um, and it's just not, it's really not sustainable, if you compare the last three fiscal years, our expenses are going up and our revenues are going down. Um, even in, in salaries, we're spending a few hundred thousand dollars more each month. And MSOC's the same thing. Um, so it's, it's really a discussion about really minimizing our spending. Um, cutting more stuff. Um, and really putting a freeze on a lot of stuff this next year, if we want to be able to continue to be good stewards of our money and not have the state take over. Um, so it's, it's a, a lot bigger conversation, and when we go into our budget meetings this next, this next month. Um, we'll, we'll talk a lot more about that, um, but we really need, really need to look at our expenses, what we're spending on. Obviously, staff is the biggest thing. Um, I mean, we're spending three point two to three point five million dollars a month in staff. Um, and that includes just base salaries, extra overtime, extra time. We, I were having a conversation earlier, we, we put a, a freeze on, on overtime, but it doesn't stop. And by law, if somebody worked hours, we cannot not pay them. Um, so there's a lot of things spending wise that we're going to really have to cut back on.
So if we put a freeze on overtime, then wouldn't it be the, their management team that be responsible for that?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Correct. So, basically then, what has to happen is uh, progressive discipline. So we still have to pay them, but there becomes progressive discipline, because we told you can't do overtime unless, literally, people are only supposed to do overtime or extra time if Kim or I approve it. I haven't had anyone ask me, now, right now, in the summer, we're not, we're not really getting that, you know, you know, but during the school year, um, and Kim put that email out and.
Couple of weeks ago.
It was after the school year was already over, but we were talking today about the startup of school. Um, there's a lot of times people get brought in for extra time, because they do need help in the building skin, but the reality is, it just is, just like, we need to put notice out now. Whatever your con, contract days are, that's what you work, and the only way that you can work any extra days is to get direct approval from Kim or I, that's it. Um, we, we, I was gonna go home, we sat for an hour today talking um. Costs of run, doing business is not gonna come down, it's just not, I mean, it continues to grow. Um, and when we even cutting, like, obviously cutting staff, but cutting some of our positions, like food service and like, it's such a small amount, it's just not chipping away at the iceberg. Um, it makes some impact, but not enough. Uh, we talked a lot about major cutting of building budgets, really slashing building budgets to just the bare essentials. Um, there's about reducing, doing some more staff reductions before uh, here in the next couple of weeks. Um, it's, it's a, we're in a really, really challenging place.
I, I think another huge issue is a lot of stuff we can't control because of CBAs. I mean, for example, Viva, we're the, our district pays more in Viva than any other district in the state, we're paying almost a million dollars a year in Viva. Um, and that's a benefit that we offer our staff, because it's written into their, their CBAs. Um, and the, the.
And the impact of that was, so, I mean, some of it's from long ago, it's been in there for a long time.
And it, you know, just keeps, it's, it's regressive bargaining, just doesn't happen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've tried, we have tried, um, and there's just some stuff that, that they won't give up. Um, and on one hand, I, I can't blame them, you, you know, you need to make a living. Um, but on the other hand, we're not in the business of making money here. Um, we're in the business of, of staying afloat and not having the state take over um, and determine what we cut and have, us have no power. Um, and nobody wants that, you know, we wanna be able to control our spending and, and the decisions that we make. Um, and so I think that, I think that we really, it's just a bigger conversation and um, sacrificing now to make sure that we're sustainable in the future. But you don't have a static number.
Yeah, they're, they're different by group.
So, how do you, like, everybody gets, that's very counter, I know it's hard to act yourself. I, there's articles, yeah, friends about, so, they, they're, the, the.
Yeah.
Article talks about. So, forty out, there's another forty, they tell.
Right. Yes.
And that's, and that's exactly what's happened here, right, just not as big of a number, um, but still the same impact, you know, we don't have a couple hundred thousand dollar budget. Um, but if you, you know, put it down, it's, it's basically the same amount, we're dipping into our fund balance every single year, every month. I mean, you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, our, our fund balance every month was over five million dollars. Um, obviously, our revenue was a lot different, we were getting S R money, um, and not completely dropped off. Um, our, our Elliott A money is affected also by the amount of kids that we have in ALE. Um, we know, that's, that's a new thing too. Um, and so there, it, it's just, it's crazy how you cut one thing and it affects something else.
And at the same time, you know, we went from half a million dollars for insurance to a million dollars for insurance, that's like two and a half percent of our budget, just to pay our insurance. That has happened over, in the last two years, and it could go up again.
It's gonna go up again this year, probably. It's gonna go up again this year, probably almost a million dollars. And then, and then you have to pay that upfront. They don't let you pay that throughout. If if we were able to make the payments throughout the year, we'd be in a lot better position. But when you're telling me we make two point seven million dollars in the month of September and our expenses are five million. It's just not, it, it's just not sustainable. The delayed apportionment from the state in June, is that? Already factored into here, like we seen that corrected yet? Resolve in June, I think. End of July, so we should, we should get our apportionment report from O S P I tomorrow, twenty-fourth. It's, they run it on the twentieth, but. They don't publish it for for a few days. So we should get it tomorrow and know and know that number, but they're supposed to true up in July. And July is. Low fund balances. Partially because of that.
When you say July, it's the end of July.
The end of July, yeah.
All of July.
So, you know, we get twelve point five percent, and and that's another thing too is. The, the pers- the amount of money that they give us every month fluctuates. Um it's not like we get the full twenty-four million dollars upfront and are able to spend it as we choose. Um some months we get five, some months we get nine, some months we get twelve point five. Um and so, and it's, you know, it's predicted to, to go down next year also. Um and and LEA is too, you know, you know, we were talking earlier, we don't get levy equalization money like. Our neighboring districts do. So we're passing these levies and, you know, our community is, it doesn't like the amount of money, but the amount of money that we're getting from the levies is still significantly lower than. Sunny Side, for example. Um there's no equalization money that we get at all. Um an another thing is a lot of our extra grants have been cut off, uh supply chain systems, for example, for food. I mean, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that that helped us. To provide fresh food for, for our kids, and we don't get that anymore either, they cut that off this year. Um so anything outside of the food service allocation general fund.
Well, and I like, so my budgets, I have quite a few budgets I manage, and this is not grant budgets. I have over half a million dollars there in my budgets I haven't spent. That are this year that I have not spent, and if I had, it would be worse.
And, and it's, you know, we're, we're moving money and we're not spending it out of Deanna's budget, but then we're having to to spend. Twenty-five thousand dollars on a lift. Um we're having to spend money for, for, for other things, and so. Um it, we're just not, we don't have the revenue to sustain the expenses. And I mean, we're, we're behind in a lot of stuff. I mean, just for Bus Boss, for example. Our, our, even our, our office, we do so many things that are in the stone age because we're not paying for. Um the software that that would help us, and it affects our employees, it affects their mental health, it. Um it's, it's, I think it's a, a lot bigger issue um than people realize when they're not. Um but it's, it's definitely a conversation that that we need to have and and make a lot more cuts. Um grant money would be great, um but unfortunately, there's just, there's no grants out there to apply for um that we qualify for. Um we could spend the money on, on getting a grant rider, which we have before, and it's. I, I mean, it didn't really do anything, because there's just nothing out there, um we just don't qualify for anything. We're not small enough to be, to get, you know, these big grants for small schools, and we're not big enough to get levy equalization money like Sunny Side does. Um so we're really just kind of, kind of stuck. I wish I had better news. But I mean.
I don't think I have any, though.
So by next meeting, uh you'll know for sure if we got repaid back for May and June.
Oh, no, tomorrow.
Could you just let us know? Any questions for Elise?
I know, I, I, yeah, I'm kinda like, I don't even know if I should talk about this stuff. Yeah, um so I did put this uh on your. This is one of the things that Elise disreferenced. We, you know, we've had. We had the same employees for a hundred years, and then we've had this turnover. Our employees are struggling in HR and payroll because most districts our size have more people doing the work than we have. We have a little bit more of a skeleton crew. So this is an expense, and it's not something we've decided to do or committed to do. Uh but we currently use a company called Frontline, um. Frontline Central, um we have uh absence management where uh if you go in and you need a sub. And people can go in and pick up a sub job. Uh they offer a lot of different things, there's an expense to it, of course. But right now, there's a big expense also to the mental health of our employees and the amount of work they're doing, because we're processing and payroll. Hundreds and hundreds of pieces of paper. Which cur- you know, paper time sheets coming in for people or. Oh, I couldn't even, summer school, app, you know, suit, suit supervision, all kinds of things. Um and there's a lot of, it it's easy to make mistakes when you're processing that much paper and you're relying, sometimes you have to double check everybody's work. So we're uh looking at these two programs. We intended for this to be a discussion item. I, I got left off the agenda. Um but we are looking at two different products that do have a cost to them. And so we may or may not do this, uh but recruiting and hiring, right now, we have. Uh online application system that used to have a lot of districts and it's down to us and maybe one other. District, and it's not very good. It's literally the application, you can do the application. But frontline would allow you to do the whole process from advertising to hiring to all the onboarding. All of the information would trend, go directly into your employee system. Right now, what happens is. When you do this system, we hire something, someone, everything's in paper. Um you print out the applications, you do, um which we still maybe would do, you're doing interviews, you're writing notes. And then, once you make a decision, you go back and you, uh you have to, well, you have to do your references, that's on paper. Then you have to do a hiring form, that's on paper, and that has to go to at least three people before it gets to the actual end of hiring. And this is piece of paper being handed around. So that would um be better. Um and then the time and attendance is a big one because we're doing the absence management, but not the, like. Time sheeting piece. All of, we, all of our uh classified employees turn in a time sheet. They're in the system as basically a contract and get paid. Uh but if they had comp time, or if someone stayed and did, you know, supervise the basketball game. A paper time sheet is coming for people to get paid. So that would. Alleviate that for us and make it better for our employees. Um but again, it's a cost, and we don't know at this time if we can afford to do it. Um but we know at some point we cannot afford, we can afford not to, because we are, we're gonna continue to struggle if we don't. Get in to a more appropriate system than what we're doing right now.
And I, I've been processing payroll the last few months and. I mean, when I say we're in the stone age with a lot of things, we're in the stone age for a lot of things. Um for example, like uh bus driver time sheets. It, I, I did payroll for a decade before I came into this role. It took me three days to process those time sheets. Um where if we had time and attendance, the bus drivers would fuck in, fuck out. Um it would, um it would have a summary for them, it would print off every day. Um it, it, it would just be so much more efficient. Um when I first started, we had, our, our payroll person was hand entering every single time off transaction for every employee in the district. Um and there, there, there's just a lot of processes. Um and I say no to everything. I, I mean financially. Um but this is something that I think that we have to spend the money on. Um the mental health of our, our employees, that the turnover that we're having. Um it's, it's just not the greatest, and our o- our office is so short-staffed already. Um I mean, we need to have two more full-time people, uh but we just don't have the money for it. Um this would help us streamline a lot of things. It would, it would honestly be a cost savings at the end of the road. There, there are so many, so many pieces that come together even for subs. Um the, the one system has to talk to the other to make sure that the code is correct and they don't now. And so we have a lot of things are getting charged to general fund, a lot of staff that should be charged to grants, um and we don't know that. And so when we could be getting extra money for that instead of using B E A funds. Uh the cost of overtime, the amount of, the amount of time that it takes for our payroll and HR staff um to do some of these things. Um it's, it's, it's a lot for, for anybody. Um and so. I, I know, there, there's two different pieces. There's the HR recruiting piece, which I think i- is something that is needed. I don't think it's as easy as time and attendance. I think um if we couldn't afford to do both of them right away, we could implement one, one year and another the next year. Um but it, it, we, we have these systems, we're already paying for a piece of this system, they're already installed everywhere, everybody's already using the A S O P piece everywhere. Um it's just another module a- addition to it that would just make it. A lot more seamless, and it would cost the money upfront, um but in the end, it would be, it would be a cost savings. Um just money-wise, mental health-wise, um the, we, you know, we value our employees. Um and uh we see how hard they're working and and the stress. Um and we just need to, we need to make our systems a little bit better, kinda like the, the bus boss thing. Uh we need to streamline a lot of stuff.
Um so this is for both modules, so I can't tell you the breakdown between the two. The time and attendance and recruiting and hiring for our district is. Is uh in the twenty thousand dollar range, and that would be a yearly cost. Um and then we would have to pay the at one-time implementation fee. There's like several uh weeks, six weeks of them. Like getting all of our stuff lined up correctly before we can use a system. That's a, that's another. Yeah, fifteen to, is it twelve weeks?
We started in August, I mean, it, it wouldn't go live until January. Um because it's, it's a cross, and it's also a cleanup, it's the, it's the cleanup of the system. Um getting everybody's calendars in there, the account codes, their schedules. Um uh making it to where it talks to Skyward, and Skyward talks to Frontline and and easy export and import. Um it's. I have the worst pregnancy brain, what was the question?
Are they asked, well, I don't even know.
And so we've been working with a rep there, um and there is a little bit of flexibility. We wanted to bring it up in a discussion item first before we have them waste their time. And do a, a huge demo for us and actually get the quotes for us. Um the gal that we're working with, she's amazing, but she does have to go to her admin. And let them know what we can afford to see if that's something that they can work with. Um and then um go from there, but we wanted to discuss it first before we waste their time and and. Doing a whole bunch of demos for us, if it's not something.
So there, the implementation fee is fifteen to eighteen thousand, but I think if we did one of the two, it's approximately half of each of those. Yeah, so it's either about forty thousand or about twenty thousand.
I'd be curious to know. You calculated the cost in man-hours currently. You know, annually, what does it cost for, for a person to process all of these things? And is there then a cost, like what's the cost savings by having this automated?
We would, but we don't have time. I mean, the reality is, it's true. We know there's a huge cost and. Um we're not able to bring someone in and to say, like, have this smooth system. It's the same thing with our HR, that we're doing a ton of cleanup in Skyward with our HR. Um in activating employees that are no longer with us, all kinds of things, but. With this system, if we hired someone, the information would go directly into Skyward, and we wouldn't be, we're hand-entering everything now in multiple systems. And it's just, I mean, it's super inefficient and it's easy to make mistakes.
Yeah, and I, and I think too, um you know, Sean's brought up using, because Skyward also has the ability for uh for jobs. But we're migrating from Skyward in two and a half years. Um and so I don't wanna pay for an additional module in Skyward and do all of the to work to move everything over, just to have it go away in a couple of years. Um and we have to move to Q no matter what, so it's, it's not something that's a choice. Um but, you know, the, the gal that we're working with at Frontline um offered to do a presentation if you guys would like to see more. Um it, it's kinda hard if you're not in it to understand um all the pools and the bells and whistles and. Get excited about the things we get excited that it can do. Um but it might be beneficial just so you can see. Uh really the full scope of it, and there's so many things within those systems that we can be utilizing that we're not now. We have so much paper. Um and we spend so much money on paper and printing and um. The ink, the, the postage, it, it's, it's crazy, um and we want to move more towards electronic. Um and uh we're one of the last districts that's still, still uses this job center. I think there, there's three in the state, and we're one of them. Yeah. If you ever have an hour free. About you could do like a, just a quick and dirty estimate of like. How much time does it take for people to do their annual time sheets, and then someone to process them?
We could probably run a, a no, an, an overtime report pretty easily for those two.
I mean, at least you said you spent three days.
I know, that, that alone's ridiculous, and I mean, but adding up the minutes because of the way the routes run and all the.
That was just for bus, I mean, I don't get to pay any extra for the extra hours.
But you also have a lot of other stuff you could have been doing. There's a, there's a big cost to that.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't take a lot of time to come up with forty thousand dollars in.
Nope.
Cost.
Nope.
With inefficient processes, so I mean, I'd, I'd love to see.
An efficiency expert would have a heyday in our district, I think, with some of these things.
So, Elise, if you went with, with the time and attendance module of this, that gets you in. Uh time clock set up for like hourly employees.
Yeah.
Uh and then my other, going back a bit ago, my question for you is. So time cards currently for hourly employees, if we're having issues with people accumulating overtime. Why are not the supervisors looking at these things, say Thursday night and saying, hey, tomorrow on Friday, you need to clock out at one o'clock?
So um our employees, especially if they're eight-hour employees, do not have, like, we have extra time and overtime. So we have like seven-hour employees, six, food service is a big one, they may only work four hours, but they might stay two extra hours to cut up more vegetables, and so that's extra time. Our eight-hour employees, maintenance, custodial can go into overtime as our office employees can also. So we talked about today about putting out um the communication, it's working with our ad team, not just. Going, oh, it's, I, I mean, it's, it's, we can only do what we can do in our office, but that has to be with the support of our administrative team. The end of the line's the end of the line. There are certain things that have to be done in the day, like, for instance, a transmittal perhaps. Uh a deposit, can't leave a big amount of money, but that, but then you do that first, and then if you can't get something else done, you come back and do it the next day.
And I think too, it's not always calculated as overtime, so they can. Comp time also.
Right.
So they accumulate comp time, so they're gone for the day, but they need a sub. So we're paying for that person, and then we're also paying for the sub.
Yep, it's both issues.
So it's, it's not just.
I mean, I know for, I think for our maintenance department, they've really. They did a really good job cutting their overtime, big time.
Andy has, Andy has really.
Locked that down a lot. Yeah, but we have other areas that needs to happen. So we, Elise and I worked on that today, we're gonna continue to work on that. We just gotta be pro- more proactive, and then the follow-through with the discipline has to happen if someone's doing you a letter. I told you not to do this, here's a letter, you did it again, that's the way it goes. Um I have so much good information here, um helpful. I, I'm gonna tell you that my high school science teachers believe that they have a curriculum they really want. I don't know if we have the money. I actually have the money in my budget to buy it, but I don't know if I'm gonna get to spend it. Remember, we have a thirty thousand dollar, thirty-one thousand dollar grant for adoption. I don't have the quote for it yet, I still, it's not gonna happen at the start of the school year, even if it happens, because I need the committee to come back together. And my district construction materials committee has to come back together, there has to be open review time for it. They know that, they've waited for twenty years, they're okay if we take a little bit longer. So um I'm just letting you know that for the high school that is moving forward, and then we'll have to make the decision if we can spend the funds or not. I already warned Elise about that. Um and then I, I, we have been working, we've pretty much beat this horse to death um about, and that's a bad phrase to use in processor, but. We made some adjustments, you know, we lost our migrant funding, but in a conversation I had with. Um Darlene yesterday. Darlene yesterday, we had a really, I had her really, uh, we really discussed the direct, our, uh, the community eligibility provision for school lunch. If we do not, um, enroll students in the migrant program, our, our, uh, C, we're probably gonna lose our CEP program. So we will probably not have universal, we will not have free lunch, because what will happen is, that percentage of kids, which is about twenty-two percent of the kids in our district, will no longer. So about a third of them will drop off this year, and a third will drop off the next year, and that pers- our, our direct cert provision, students that are directly certified for free introduced lunch, our, um, foster care, um, any Medicaid student, our migrant students, homeless students. So that percentage, the bigger that percentage is, that helps us with our funding and how we become eligible for every student to get free meals. If we do not enroll, if we stop enrolling students in the migrant program, we're going to probably lose that. And that was something that, um, because I said to, to, I was saying, well, Darlene, we're still gonna have, most of those students are gonna qualify for free, free or reduced lunch, so we would, and she goes, no, Deanna, it's our community, that's that, that direct cert, and if we lose a direct cert, we are gonna lose the pro- we will lose that program. And we would have to go back to the charging for meals and kids having debt and all that stuff we did before. So, um, Delise and I have talked about it a little bit. We, we need to have a further conversation. I learned this information while Kim's been gone. We have not talked about it yet, but I think we're gonna have to think about how we deal with that.
Deanna, can you explain to me how we would lose the kids that are in the migrant program?
So.
I know we're losing the fun.
We have an employee whose job is migrant recruiter. She meets with the families, they go through the questionnaire that qualify you to be a migrant student or not, and then they're entered in the program, and it's for three years, they're certified for three years. So about a third of our kids have to be renewed, so we have, any new student that comes in, she meets with the family. If they qualify, they, then they're also certified. But they have to recertify every three years and have to meet the requirements of the migrant program. We will not lose the students, but they will no longer be qualified for migrant if we don't qualify them. So they will no longer be a direct cert student. That will no longer contribute to that percentage that allows us to serve the kids all free introduced lunch.
Why, why, sorry, why don't we, why wouldn't we qualify them anymore?
We don't get any funding for migrant. So somebody, we're not gonna get any funding for migrant. That's how we paid for those employees. We are gonna have to make a decision to pay for an employee, to do that work, if we want to keep that program.
There's no, there will be no one to do the interviewing.
Correct. So, we, I mean, the kids, they, they know that. If, I mean, and most people pay their, for their meals.
They have to be qualified by a person who visits with them and interviews them, or is there a different way to qualify?
No. It's called a certificate of eligibility, and there's a questioning, there has to be someone to sit down and do that. It's a all-program that they log into, complete the questionnaire for the family. I, the whole migrant program, everything's up, you know, totally up in the air. Well, there's, you know, I think Sunnyside has something like fifty employees in the migrant program. Uh, they have the actual state migrant program in Sunnyside. So they have employees that aren't like teachers or anything that work and help run that program for the state. We will continue to qual- you know, have our homeless students, kids that might be in foster care, all those things. But if we don't have someone certifying kids that are migrant, we will have an issue. That was her job. Mm-hmm. Right? Yeah.
It's like a five.
No. Well, and it's getting parents to come in and understand why they're doing it. Like, sometimes families don't really understand why they would want to do that. But we need to talk about that. So I just wanted to put that. Kim and I haven't even got to talk about it. She doesn't even know. I did send her an email, but I don't know if she's reading her email. So, uh, put that in your, in your, in your brain and think about that a little bit, because we may have to do a little adjustment on that. I'm glad I found out about it. Because that would be, I mean, our poverty percentage is, oh, oh, averages over eighty percent. So that gives all of our kids opportunity for free meals. And that's all the good news I have for today.
Thank you, Deanna.
Sure.
We're gonna be on the board reports. Michelle?
I don't know who was worse, Deanna. I'm depressed. So, gosh, I guess it was the fourth of July to the ninth of July, I was able to, um, chaperone the FCLA National Conference in Orlando. That was really great. Um, the two girls that presented, um, well, they participated in the category of public presentation. They, uh, won a silver in that, had a great time, went to some good leadership sessions, and, um, I just think that program is so great, so I'm hoping that it continues to grow. Um, and really, I just wanted to thank you guys for all you're doing with the budget difficulties. I know it's hard, but appreciate your transparency, really do. Um, we'll get through it one way or another. So, um, yeah, just thanks for all you're doing to try to mitigate the impact on our kids. Appreciate it. Well, yeah.
Sure. Right?
Off the second, thank you guys. Yeah, thank you.
I think our conversation starts, we have to have a transparent, every good group. Very wonderful.
Great, thanks, Lisa. Um, I don't have anything yet. I don't think it's all been said tonight, so I appreciate that, and, uh, so I don't know how many are still online, but we will have, uh, budget meetings through August. Uh, so next study session will be August thirteenth, right here at five P M. Uh, followed by a regular board meeting at six P M. On August thirteenth, so two meetings that day, then a study session August twentieth at five P M if needed. And then another regular board meeting August twenty-seventh. So a lot of budget talks, uh, a lot of difficult, long conversations. So I appreciate all the, all the work, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.